Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission of the City of Moreno Valley. I now call this meeting to order on December 9, 2021 at 7:01 PM. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Kobian?
Present.
Commissioner Bugeras?
Here.
Commissioner Sims?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Dejeanay?
Here.
Chairperson Korzek?
Present. The Pledge of Allegiance will now be led by Commissioner Dejeanay.
Please stand. Over your heart, ready, begin.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Dejeanay. We're now going to move to the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion and a second, please?
A motion.
Commissioner Bugeras makes the motion and the second?
Second.
And Commissioner Dejeanay makes the second. Let's start the vote. It is approved five to zero. Let's move on. The public comments procedure. Any person wishing to address the commission on any matter, either under Public Comments section of the agenda or Schedule items or public hearings, must fill out a request to speak form available at the door. The completed form must be submitted to the secretary prior to the agenda item being called by the chairperson. In speaking to the commission, members of the public are limited to three minutes per person, except for the applicant for entitlement. The commission may establish an overall time limit for comments on a particular agenda item. Members of the public must direct their questions to the chairperson of the commission, not to other members of the commission, the applicant, the staff, or the audience. The next item is public comments on any item not on the agenda. Are there any speakers?
Yes, Madam Chair, Thomas Thorntley, I believe.
Yes, Mr. Thorntley, if you'd step up, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I attended the meeting Tuesday night where the city council had the opportunity to either support your decision or override your decision. I was delighted that it started to look like they were going to be in concurrence with you. I believe you did the right thing. You paid attention to the homeowners in the area and to a lot of other residents who, I think, finally reached a threshold of intolerance for more warehouses. And when those warehouses can have an impact or so monstrous that they, in essence, will blot out any view. I think the only perk somebody made comment was is, at least with that building, you won't hear the freeway noise, which, sad reason to like a project. Don't know if that project, how they're going to bring it back. Question, their concern was, it's a nice project, wrong place. Why they continued it, I don't know, because there's no way to fix that problem. And so if it comes back to you, I hope you look at it with very critical eyes like you apparently did the first time. Another thing to think about, and not necessarily just for this project, but projects like that one where it's a land use change, a general plan amendment, you have extreme discretion on what you can do and what you can impose on the projects. I honestly, in the years I've watched you guys, I don't, I don't know that I've ever even seen you impose an extra condition of approval or mitigation measure, other than maybe something kind of small. But take a project like the Trade Center. You could have imposed a condition that said they will not take any access off of Encelia. That that site plan would have to redesign, so all traffic goes in and out off of Eucalyptus, because all the other warehouses in Eucalyptus already do it just that way. The sheer volume of, you know, 2,400 employee trips, not to count however many delivery trucks, should it be that kind of a business that sends out the small cargo delivery trucks. So keep that in mind and don't think of it just as something for a little project, but when there are projects where there's just little nuances that the public brings up or things that you think of, throw them out there. It's, it's open. It's an opportunity for you to do something better for the community. And I have appreciated the work you do, even though I don't get here very often. I've usually had obligations on Thursday nights, and I cannot go to the next meeting when you're going to bring back the pilot thing. So I'm hoping, even though it's, I noticed it's continued, I can speak for a minute on that one. Will there be any speaking on those since they're continued?
Oh, it's on because it's not on anything that's on the agenda tonight, I believe you can, but you only have 11 seconds left.
No, no, no. It's on the agenda, but it's being continued.
Right.
So I can talk about it. Comes up.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll go into that when that comes up. Thank you, Mr. Thorntley, your time. You've got four seconds left. Okay. All right, thank you. Are there any other speakers?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Then we're going to move along to the next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. The approval of the consent calendar, all items listed are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the commission requests that an item be removed for separate action. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be held after the public hearing items. Questions or comments from the public on the consent calendar matter are limited to three minutes per individual and must pertain to the subject under consideration. Do we have any public comments on this?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Does any of our commissioners desire to pull any of these items for discussion? Okay, Mr. Sims?
I couldn't abstain from voting on the approval of the minutes for the November 29th, I was absent.
Okay, that is so noted. That's why you were absent. So with that change in the minutes, are there any other? Okay, if not, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move again.
Okay, Commissioner Bugeras moves and second?
Second.
And Commissioner Kobian. Let's have the vote, please. And the motion carries. And we had one abstention. Okay, moving along. Non-public hearing items, we have none, so we're going to move on to public hearing items. Item number one, I'm going to ask Sean to take it from here, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As noted in the staff report, the applicant is requesting a continuance to the January 13th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. There was a question raised at the dais just a few moments ago as to whether or not public comments can be entertained. It is at the discretion of the chair. If you wish to entertain public comment, it is up to you if you want to open the hearing or if you just want to entertain the comment at this point without opening the hearing.
Let's just hear the comment without opening the hearing.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Thorntley, if you'd come up, three minutes.
Yeah, I already know my calendar in January, and I can't be here for that meeting. I went through the report, and I don't know how thoroughly all of you will, you've definitely got more time now to get in there and go through it. I really recommend you look at the track report and also try to understand how it is that the city is going to take on trucks that will be coming into the site that aren't part of the trucks that would be coming in, in general, to the warehouses that are built or going to be built on the east end. I don't know what the, where we are in the status of trying to get Redlands Off-Ramp expanded. Last, I knew it wasn't on anybody's radar to be done. And this project will have trucks backing up traffic out onto the freeway if we're not careful. And the widening of Redlands Boulevard, Clearback, I believe, when prologist buildings were being done, the conditions were that there would be a dedicated, well, the off-ramp would be two lanes, a left and a right turn, and the right turn lane would be a through lane all the way to Eucalyptus, which would then turn onto Eucalyptus. And there would be a second lane, which would take you into the traffic circle. None of that's discussed in there. I really hope you guys make it a big point to figure out how that is, because the, we no longer analyze traffic by congestion factors, level of service. We now do it by vehicle miles. There is no vehicle miles. They get off, go a quarter mile, get their gas, get back on the freeway. But you're going to have congestion and you're going to have a mess there. So please make that serious consideration. It's my understanding that we have no control on the monies and the construction of that stuff. And so therefore, there needs to be some kind of a mitigation measure or something that indicates what milestone you would allow this project to actually begin construction, such as once Caltrans has actually approved a set of plans and are out to award the contracts. Because otherwise, the traffic impediment for any of the commuters that come off of that road, and that is a huge traffic area, because the people who drive either to Redlands to work or from Redlands to come here to work. I've done it for five and a half years, and I'm not thrilled now what it would be like there. I don't mind the traffic circle. I do see trucks having a little bit of trouble. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thorntley. Okay. Shall we continue?
At this time, we would need a motion of some sort for continuance from the commission, if that's so desired.
I motion.
Okay, motion from Mr. Bugeras?
I motion, I motion that the Planning Commission continue conditional use permit, pen 21 dash 0077, to January 13, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
May we have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Dejeanay, second. Let's call for the vote. I mean, okay. And the motion is approved, so the continuance is granted. Does the staff do any follow-up on that, or?
We will bring the item back on January 13th.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number two. The applicant is requesting approval of a tentative parcel map, 38209, pen 21 dash 0162, for finance and conveyance purposes only, to subdivide an 11.49 acre parcel into two parcels. The proposed finance map will not create legal building sites upon which new development may occur. A future map for development purposes must be processed and recorded in order for any development on either of the parcels to occur. May we have the staff report, please?
The presentation this evening will be made by Associate Planner Jeff Bradshaw.
Good evening, Chair Korzek and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you is tentative parcel map 38209. This is application pen 21 dash 0162. And as described in the agenda and the summary provided by the chair, this is a map that is specifically for finance and conveyance purposes only. The project location is in an 11, approximately 11 and a half acre site located at the southeast corner of Redlands Boulevard and Kelmea Avenue. The site has been developed with two homes and accessory structures or outbuildings near both of those homes. And again, the location is as indicated on the exhibit on display on this, on the screen there before you. The applicant has proposed this map to create two parcels out of the existing 11 acres. Again, for finance purposes only. This is not intended to convey or give any development rights to the applicant. The result of the subdivision of the property would create two parcels. Parcel one, as you can see on the exhibit, is the smaller of the parcels. It's a 1.92 acre site, and that would include one of the homes as well as the related accessory structures. Parcel two would be a larger parcel. That would be a parcel of just under 10 acres. That would also include an existing single-family residence and the supporting accessory structures that are located near that home. This is going to sound very redundant, but I'm going to repeat this, even though the chair has shared it with us. I, it needs to be very clear, I think, the intent of this particular type of a map. So I'll restate again, the proposed finance map will not create legal building sites upon which new development may occur, and a future map for development purposes must be processed and recorded in order for any development to occur on that site. And the distinction is important. In this case, when you reviewed the packet, you saw the conditions of approval, they're a very abbreviated set of conditions. They're all very specific to the recordation process. There's no development obligations on the part of the applicant, nor are there any development rights given, granted with the approval of this map. To date, I received one phone call and one email. The phone call was asking for clarification on the location of this property in question. And the email was asking for some clarification on the size of the property and the size of the parcels that would be created with this, with this subdivision. With that, that concludes my, my presentation. Staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission is that they approve resolution 2021 dash 55, and in so doing, make findings to support the conclusion that this project is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, and also approving tentative parcel map 38209. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Do we have any questions of staff? Guess not. Would the applicant like to speak? Okay, that's fine. All right. Now, at this time, we're going to open up for public testimony. The clerk will call upon each person who has requested to speak. Each member of the public wishing to speak will have a maximum of three minutes. Do we have any public comments?
No, Madam Chair.
Don't have any? Okay. At this point, do we have any, does the commission have any questions of the applicant or the staff before we move into, oh, did I close the public hearing? I think we just closed the public hearing. Okay. I'm sorry about that. Must be the rain. Or do any of you have any further questions before we move into deliberations? Okay. All right, at that point, we can begin deliberations. Anyone have anything they'd like to say?
I do, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm glad that the land on Redlands Boulevard is not being used after so many years of many people going up and down that street. A lot of people talk about the turnabout. I was there two days ago, because I needed to go look at the site. And I enjoyed myself coming down Eucalyptus from Moreno Beach all the way to Redlands. And that used to be, and it still is, over 55 miles an hour, when there's only a 45 limit. So people do go fast. But what I like about the turnabout, it slows everybody down. People cannot make those curves real quick, not even truck drivers. And truck drivers do have trouble going around a circle. They like going straight. So I'm glad for the turnabout that was put there by Holland Fairview to slow people down, even coming down Redlands Boulevard from Cactus to the freeway. People zoom there, so I'm glad it's there. So I'm glad to see this project have a split for people that eventually one day will be residents, and everything will be safe there. It'll slow everything down. So I'm glad for that, for hopefully it'll get approved, the split, new resident, new new homes, whatever it may be. I'm glad for that particular turnabout to slow traffic down.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, if there are no other questions or deliberations here, I will ask for a motion.
I'd make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Sims?
I can find the make a motion. I make a motion that the Planning Commission approve resolution 2021 dash 55 and approve parcel map 38209.
Okay, may we have a second?
Second.
A second for Mr. Dejeanay. Call for the vote. That time it did. Okay, the motion is approved. And may we have the staff wrap up, please?
The action taken by the Planning Commission this evening is an appealable action. Any interested party that would like to file an appeal may do so within 10 days of this action. If an appeal is filed, it must be in writing and directed to the Community Development Director, stating the specific reasons for the appeal, along with the appeal filing fee of $750. If any appeal is received, it will be agendized for a public hearing before the city council within 30 days. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number three. The applicant is requesting the approval of the following entitlements for the development of courtyards at Cottonwood Phase Two, which consists of a 32-unit affordable apartment complex located on a 1.61 acre site. Number one, general plan amendment, amending the city's general plan from public P to residential 15 R15-2. A change of zone from public P district to residential 15 R15 district. And three, a plot plan for a 32-unit affordable apartment complex. May we have the staff report, please?
The presentation this evening will be made by Associate Planner Julia Decoto.
Good evening, Chair Korzek and members of the Planning Commission. As you stated, the item before you tonight is a general plan amendment, pen 21 dash 0113, change of zone, pen 21 dash 0114, and a plot plan for a 32-unit multifamily project located flip to the next slide, please. Located on the east side of Indian Street, just north of Cottonwood. The parcel is 1.61 acres and is located in between the existing school site and the current courtyards at Cottonwood Project Phase One. As we stated, the project is a general plan amendment and a change of zone. It will change the general plan designation and the zone from the public use to residential 15, which is required to use, to put in a multifamily project. The proposed project is consistent with, upon the approval of the change of zone and the general plan amendment, would be consistent with the development proposed and consistent with the site to the south. The project includes the 32-unit affordable multifamily residential development. There will be two two-story buildings with 16 units apiece, designed on the 1.61 acres that serves as a phase two project to the courtyard at Cottonwood Project, which is currently under construction. There will be two, three, and four-bedroom units with a separate laundry facility right in the middle of these two buildings for these residents. The project will connect with the courtyards at Cottonwood Project that's under construction to the south with access provided via the existing project site along Cottonwood Avenue. The Cottonwood Avenue access will be the main access for this site, which includes both projects, the current one under construction and the phase two. The Indian Street access will be exit only onto Indian Street. Currently, the project under construction is working on a bicycle and circulation improvement plan for the Indian Street area to address the safety concerns. The approved project to the south includes amenities, a full-time onsite manager, a community pool, a recreation building, tot lot, and bill, and basketball courts, which will all be provided to the occupants of phase two. The proposed buildings incorporate a contemporary architectural style with concrete flat tile roofing, metal awnings, and energy-efficient windows. The project has been designed to match the project to the south, creating a seamless flow between the two sites. To date, I have received several phone calls requesting copies of the plans for the project and one comment letter that was received after the packet was published regarding the project regarding traffic safety, which has been provided to you. At this time, staff recommends that the Planning Commission make the following recommendations. That the Planning Commission recommend that the city council adopt the resolution, actually that the Planning Commission adopt resolution 2148, recommending that the city council approve the initial study and mitigate a negative exploration, and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. That the Planning Commission adopt resolution 202149, recommending that the city council approve the general plan amendment. That the Planning Commission adopt resolution 2021 dash 50, recommending that the city council approve a change of zone. And that the Planning Commission adopt resolution 202151, recommending that the city council approve the plot plan for the multifamily project. This concludes staff's presentation, and at this time, the applicant, myself, and the applicant's team are here to answer any questions for you. Thank you.
First, do we have any questions of staff? Go ahead.
I, I think I remember this project from a couple of years ago, so I just, these are, get my mind wrapped around this thing again, so. The we went, if I recall, this sliver of land that, with the 1.6 acres, that was, that was, that was originally our five, was it? And then we, it was zoned, we did a change of zone to put it into public. And now we're going back from public to our 15. So what was, what transpired over the last two years? What, what was the gymnastics for that? What was the gymnastics for that?
Ultimately, that was rezoned for public because we were intending to grant it to the Marina Valley Unified School District. The school district has since rejected, has changed their mind and decided not to proceed. Therefore.
Now they make it consistent with.
Yeah, so now we're switching it to make it consistent.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then could you put the overall site plan that has the shaded with the phase one and, okay. So what's, what is the treatment on? I had concerns about, I'll get that in deliberations, but on Marina Street, is that, what is the treatment as far as? I like, I do like the, I don't remember, was that cul-de-sac part of the original approval?
The cul-de-sac was part of the original project, so nothing with that part of it has changed with this new development. So there will be no access.
What was the fencing around the property line on Marina cul-de-sac? Is that going to be hard block or, you know, hard so that?
I will ask the applicant to answer that question. There is a block wall on the, it would be the east side there, adjacent to the residence there. But I am not sure on that.
My concern is, my concern, I went around and around about this back in 2019, I'm going to go again, is because of the density owner, because of the, what, I forget what it's called here, the density bonus housing things that they get.
Right.
There's a reduction in the parking. And all I have concern that with the, that's a nice thing for the developers, a nice thing to be able to pack more houses and create the affordable housing. I don't have issue with that. Except for the reduced parking, if there's still more parking that's needed, the 20% of parking that's not included with this because it's been reduced, will want to find its way to somewhere else. And if Marina Street is not hard fenced off where people will park on Marina or into that residence. So that's what, I would like to know what the treatment is on Marina. Then my last question is.
Commissioner Sims, I can weigh in on that if you'd like. So the fencing that was approved for Marina was tubular steel. That's what was approved along the boundary, along the cul-de-sac. There is no gates, there are no access permitted in any kind. That has not changed as part of this development. Also, with regards to the parking, I do want to note that since the last time this was reviewed, we've actually had some authority with regards to concessions taken away from us. One of those is that we can no longer grant a concession for parking because it is already built into the density bonus ordinance in state law. It is now required of us.
Yeah, well, yeah. That still won't stop me from ranting.
Understand, but I'm just, I'm just, we don't have any, I want to note for the commission, we do not have authority any longer with regard to that.
Yeah, it's non-discretionary now. I fully understand that. This is just, I don't agree with Sacramento law.
Understand, but I.
Bad law, as far as I'm concerned.
For the, for the knowledge of the, you know, for the general knowledge of the whole commission, I did want to clarify that.
Okay, and then I guess the last question I have is, is, I can't, I didn't go back and pull up the original staff report and the conditions for the phase one of this. But was, did the city and the developer enter into the density bonus housing agreement that stipulated all the conditions and concessions and whatnot for the phase one?
Yes, we did.
Is this, is phase two going to be done by an amendment to the first one? Or is it going to be a separate sole agreement? And the other question I have is, is who has the legal, because the agreement is not something that the commission sees. So I don't know if that's within our purview or see that.
So the.
Who is, who in the city is authorized, the legal authorities, to make these concessions?
To make the concession.
Concessions consistent with the density bonus.
Ultimately, the concessions are made by the city council through the density bonus agreement. At this time, we have had discussions with our housing authority with relation to how we will go forward with the agreements. It is not clear as of today whether it will be an amendment or a completely new agreement. There are some nuances related to doing both of them. And right now, they're being analyzed with the city attorney's office as to which would be the more appropriate mechanism. It could be done either way, though.
But I would assume that the amendment or a new agreement will mirror similarly the, whatever was agreed to.
Yes, yes, it would.
Okay.
And ultimately, that will have to go back to city council for their action either way, whether it's an amendment or new.
Okay, and a question on the phase one, the southeast corner, what is that? Is that the manager's house or is that like the clubhouse or the community? Is that community facility?
The southeast corner is a combination of both the community building, the management office, and the manager's residence. It's all three.
Okay, and I just, I just, this is, I don't agree with the reductions and stuff like that, but that's another story. But I do, what, this was a well thought, in my opinion, was a well thought out. Phase one, I'm talking about phase one, not phase two, but the phase one. There is the transition from this high density to the single family. There is buffer, there's recreational open space and whatnot, and not jammed up right up against the existing residential. So it was a transitioned well and thought out well. Like, I've done with my comments, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, my question is the exitway on Indian and the entryway on Cottonwood, are those gated?
Yes, I believe the applicant is going to gate them. It shows on the plans, we can verify that with him, but.
Like a passcode or something to get in for the residents to get in and out of it?
Yes, we, like I said, we'll verify that with the applicant, but it does say it's gated.
Any other questions for staff? If not, would the applicant like to come up, please? I think we have some questions for you, and also if you would like to make a presentation.
Good evening commissioners, staff. My name is Jim Jernigan, I'm with Rancho Vallejo Developers. I was up here two years ago with you guys for the first phase, and I'd like to report that it's going well. We'll be opening up in the spring and we'll have a ground opening, invite everybody. So originally, Commissioner Sims, you mentioned, do we switch back and forth with zoning? And as Sean said, we did originally do it in conjunction with the city to do it as a parking lot. And once that was no longer viable, met with the city and we decided the best use for the land was to put some more units, take advantage of the infrastructure that we put in. And had we had that foresight or not have that other path, we would have not had to do this right now. So gone through the process again, I've got the same design team involved. I appreciate the compliments about our thoughts of keeping some buffer between us and the residents. I don't know if you remember, but I'm a 50-year resident of this town, so I'm very concerned with what goes on in this town. And I try to do my best to be a good neighbor to my fellow Marina Valyrians. So the 32 units, same architectural look blends in nicely. We're using the existing roads. It is a gated community. We'll have controlled access on the entry, and the entry is only off of Cottonwood. Indian is exit only. We're very concerned also with the traffic issues. And that was brought to my attention about six weeks ago from the city engineer. And we agreed to take our already approved striping plan and redo it at my cost to go ahead and do something that's a little safer, understanding that corridor may have some concerns. So we have addressed that, we've adopted the recommendations from the city. And they are being implemented and will be done when we do our street improvements in February on the first phase. So that will be taken care of right away. The, it will be a separate agreement for the density bonus agreement. Commissioner Sims, and it will mirror the first one, I would imagine. I don't know if I missed anything, it is no access for the cul-de-sac, so we're not expecting to have any traffic going through there. That's all the notes I took when you guys were speaking. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I do, I, so in concept, so when I read this right, so there's. And surprisingly, it's in the Title IX stuff, if, coming up right after you on this thing. But the, these density benefits things, so some of these, some of these are going to bill for low income or extremely low, some are very low, some are low income, and some are moderate income. So anyhow, I guess there's a, it's based on your income as compared to some.
The area median income, the county.
So, so I guess, could you just walk me through, I'm curious, I don't know what my partners up here are, but the, can you explain in practicality, though? So there must be a market price for whatever size units these are going to be that you could get absent any of this agreement that you're going to do.
Well, the market rate apartments, you're going to pay rent, whatever the market will bear. On a market rate deal, sorry, you will pay whatever the market will bear.
Yeah, you're going to get your, yeah, you get two, three grand, whatever. So how does, in practicality, there's going to be X amount of units based on your density benefits reductions or whatever these things, and not paying the fees and some of the things that you're getting as concessions by the city? And if I'm using a wrong word, I apologize, the wrong terminology.
Or do you want me to explain who's eligible to move in and how we determine that?
How does the city and the owner yourself or property manager, how do you, how do you track that there's a certain amount of, you know, 30% or the?
We do it very carefully.
Tax return every year?
Everybody is income qualified and asset qualified. And when we apply for our funding, we do our targeted income. And so we target people at every income group, anywhere from 30% AMI up to 60% AMI. And if Riverside County has a $70,000 AMI, that's the family that makes, right there in the middle. They make 70,000, we target people to make 21,000 to 43,000, or whatever the math works out to. And then we adjust it by family size. So we do qualify the people. And we, like I said, our funding source does dictate how many units we have at this income brand, this income band, and it stays that way for 55 years.
So how does, okay, thank you. And how does that, so does the, does the market rate, or does the rate that for the leases or rents or however you do this, those fluctuate with the income or?
They will fluctuate within their income band, and then annually it gets adjusted by HUD.
All right, thank you.
I have a question, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Is the project housing funded by the federal government? Or was it private?
Federal government.
Federal government, so these are high, so these are housing projects?
Yeah.
I know.
They are, yes.
Okay, that's a fair, fair answer. Because it means a lot when you say the right way. Because it is an adjustment according to income for those to live in those kind of buildings. You go a dollar more, you pay more for rent. That's how it goes, the federal government does it that way. You stay under a budget, you pay less. It's a federal thing. That's how it's done with federal projects like that. Because I'll share later, but I understand how it goes. I just want to make sure that everyone that applies according to their income, there's an opportunity for them to move into those housing projects. Units, better word. I call them different in New York, but you call them units here. We call them apartments.
Well, projects has a negative connotation, but.
Right, so you want to use the proper word. So, so they're housing, that's good, good answer. I want to thank you because I went to the site and I believe that you're going to provide the same room in space, open space, as you provided in phase one for phase two. You're going to have the same place to be able to move around. Because I was there two days ago and I saw what it was like to be on the property itself. Anyway, I'll share that when I close. Anyway, thank you for your answers.
You're welcome. And I'd like to add also, we were asking for a density bonus, but the overall density in this project, if you take all the units and the size of our project, is a little over 13 units to the acre. And most multifamily projects in the city are 15 to 30 units to the acre, so we're very low density.
Anyone else?
Add a quick question. I've been on the site as well. I'm familiar with the project. One quick question, as far as the contractors you have on site, the subcontractors, are they going to be the same ones you plan on? Are you going to go out to bid for this new project? It's going to be brand new, or does it plan to go back out?
I'll go out to bid, hopefully I can keep the same team intact because they know the product and they know the area, and they've done some of the infrastructure that we're going to tap into for phase two, but it's not mandatory.
And as a developer, it being funded by the federal government, what guidelines are the subcontractors and your other contractors required to abide by?
They're all subject to section three and reporting and outreach.
Like a certified payroll.
Right, we do certified payrolls, we're prevailing wage job.
Okay, thank you.
I'm curious, on the northeast corner. The last time we had the project, we were looking at phase one and there was some buffer zone between the residence there and the project. But now we're looking at two-story buildings. And I remember the person that spoke, that northeast, that housed there, I believe an elderly woman lives in that home.
You did, yeah, you're correct. And we took that into consideration as well. If you look at the design, we limited it to two stories. We didn't want to go to three stories because I didn't want to be peeking into people's backyard. And we moved both buildings as far west as possible. So if you look at the east corner, the northeast corner, it's all parking.
Okay, that's what I was concerned with. I remember they had some reservations about that, they spoke about that. Okay, so this is parking here?
Yeah, and we'll also put an eight-foot block wall similar to what we're putting right now along the six residences that are, that are but phase one.
And the wall between the project and the school?
That'll just be wrought iron. Just like the perimeter, the front perimeter is.
Just, how tall is that?
Six foot.
Wrought iron without cross beams?
It'll have some at the bottom and the top, but just whatever the standard is in the city. Same thing we put in the first phase. And they'll have CMU block pilasters.
I was concerned about students jumping the fence and cutting through. As a student that will possibly live on the.
It's an adult school now?
There's two schools. Yeah, there's a couple.
It was a junior high when I lived there.
Well, yeah, it was Alessandro.
Right.
Yeah, one back in the day. I've been in the city too 52 years. No, there's two schools there, and there's some younger schools, students that go there. They would use that field to cut through. So the students that live east of Cottonwood, on the east end, east of Indian down Cottonwood will cut through that. That's one of the reasons why I asked if it was gated, because they're going to cut through, so.
If you look at Google Image, they have the little path through there on some of the old Google Image photos.
Okay, yeah, you can see the foot traffic going through there. So I was concerned that they'll jump that fence to cut through your project. Or when the gate is, if it's not gated, they'll cut through on the entry, the exitway on Indian and come out on Cottonwood.
Right.
Right, so I'm concerned if that's going to be controlled.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more question, ma'am. Because it's funded by the federal government, there will be no discrimination whether you're blind, age, or disabled. As long as they qualify to be able to put themselves in that apartment, there should be no problems for them, right, sir?
That is correct.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Okay, you can take a seat, we might call you back up again after public testimony.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, we're going to open public testimony. A clerk will call upon each person who has requested to speak. Each member of the public wishing to speak will have a maximum of three minutes to speak on this agenda item. I see we have some public comments. Go ahead.
We have two, Madam Chair, Daryl Barnes and Julio Ramos.
Hello. You know, last time I came before you guys, I think I see.
You know, last time I came before you guys, I think I see three of you guys that I recognized and I was strongly opposed to the project because of safety concerns and with the block wall and everything with phase one. I stand before you today that I, you know, considering everything that has happened, that I'm strongly in favor of them being approved. Jim, who lived in the neighborhood that I grew up in, has availed himself. I've been in close contact with his superintendent throughout that has called me, text me, came to the house and kept me abreast of every step of the way concerning the eight foot block wall, all the problems that they were having with the delays with the city as far as gas company and having to reroute drainage lines and everything. And I have to say that from a construction standpoint, and I was a construction worker back thirty, forty years ago, that this has been the quietest construction crew that I've ever been around. You know, the only problems that we had initially was when they had the the earth movers and stuff in there. And, you know, those houses along that back line, none of none of those old houses were equipped with central heating and air. So we all have the swamp coolers. And so in the morning, when you turn that thing on, you know, you'd have to duck or, you know, cover your food and everything. But yeah, I mean, the projects going along, they've kept their word. I remember Raphael, I remember you were a strong advocate for 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 them committing to putting that barrier, you know, between us and the apartment complex. And they've done it, they started the demo yesterday where they tore down our fences. And it's my understanding that that block wall, the construction of the block wall is just going to start in about two to three weeks, which makes all the other residents along there happy. And I speak here tonight on their behalf. And yeah, I mean, it's, I opposed it, but it's it's turned into a great project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Next speaker. And this would be Julio Ramos Esquire.
Good evening, members of the commission, Madam Chairwoman. I'm a longtime resident of Moreno Valley as well. I graduated from Moreno Valley High School in nineteen eighty six. My claim to fame is I played baseball with Troy Percival. And as a result of being part of the community and living in the community, we know quite in great detail what's going on on Indian Street. It was dangerous when we moved in nineteen eighty three here and it continues to be dangerous. Unfortunately, a lot of the documents that have been submitted by the experts in support of the negative declarations don't really address the issues of traffic safety. Don't talk about the issues of of the volume of 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 miles traveled that the project in and of itself will add to Indian Street. The underlying numbers and assumptions with respect to the traffic flows currently are based on seven thousand four hundred visits per week or per day, I should say, on Indian Street. But the city needs to understand that the, for example, one of the issues is that the noise analysis that was made with respect to the project has an assumption there that that by the year twenty twenty two, there will be over eleven thousand daily trips on Indian Street. So I come on behalf of Oneida Street Bike Club. We have the member right here, Elijah Ramos, who's concerned about what's happening here. He's at at the local elementary school and he's he's worried about what's happening and what's taking place. Now, the project and the merits of the project with respect to phase one, we didn't protest that. Meaning we, my mother, my family, who is here in attendance, my brother, we didn't say anything with respect to anything negative about the project because we support public housing. I fought for public housing in New York City, in Brooklyn Legal Services for three years. I've been a member of the California Public Utilities Commission. I know what's going on there with respect to the the gas line that we have here. But in sum, there is an issue, a legal issue that I need to address. And I do want to make a citation. And that is with respect to the whole of an action includes not just specific approvals, but the underlying activity as well as the development or activity that could result from the approval with respect to a CEQA project. No piecemealing, that's what's going on here. It's piecemealing, we're going from phase one to phase two. No piecemealing is allowed by CEQA.
Mr. Ramos, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
And that and that and that CEQA decision, I will cite, just if I may, may I be indulged? Can I can I just cite for the record?
Five seconds.
I will cite. The case is Association for a Cleaner Environment versus Yosemite Community College District, two thousand four, one sixteen, Calat, fourth, six two nine. And it supports the proposition, you cannot piecemeal this type of project. And that's why we stand in opposition to it.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker.
And Angela Ramos.
Evening. My name is Angelina Ramos and I live in front of the project that you have over here. And my my main concern is the exit through Indian. Because it should not be because there's a lot of traffic. There's no studies have been done about how many people cross the street without a light. Okay, and another concern is why, why it cannot be a wall in there? I just want an answer. Why it has to be an exit through there? That's my main concern and thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Angelina. Are there any other speakers?
No, Madam Chair.
At this time, would the applicant like to come up and address any of the public comments? No, yes or no? No? Come on up, you can.
Commissioners, just going to address the safety issue on Indian in relation to what the project's doing. Understand that there's currently two lanes going northbound in on Indian adjacent to the project. And so in conjunction with the with city staff, improvements to a strapping plan that's going to be implemented with the street improvement is going to provide a buffered bike lane and and a single lane going northbound. So again, safety improvements are being proposed and that will be implemented with the project. So that's one of the, one of the the things the applicant's been working with the the city on prior to the, some of the safety concerns that were brought up. So proactively putting some of those safety improvements and from a bike standpoint and vehicle standpoint, so.
Yeah, just like to comment and and respond to Mr. Ramos. There's no intent here to piecemeal this project as we've brought out and shared with everyone. This was, this was just a change of circumstances. And as I said before, we would have done this all in one project and I think it would have had no more opposition than it than it should now. So I respectfully request your support on this project and can answer any more questions if you like.
Okay, well, does, do we have any more questions of staff or of the applicant before we go into deliberations? I just, I'm going to close the public hearing at this point. So why don't we begin deliberations?
I like the project. I, again, fifty some odd years, I went to Alessandro. I remember cutting through that field myself. I'm glad the field is gone. And I would say this, I've said it a hundred times, Moreno Valley is growing. And where there are empty fills, there are now buildings. Where there were empty fills, there's now housing. And I thank the developer for coming in and and taking a chance in that area. I really, you know, that's one of the older parts of Moreno Valley and improving. We've had some senior citizen homes go in that area between Cottonwood and Sunny Mead, new apartment buildings going in and it's just just improving, it's just fantastic. So I can't say much more about it. I walked by the projects, driven by the project, I love what I see.
Anyone else?
I'll go next, ma'am. I went by the project two days ago to to look at the proposed project that's coming up right now. And I went around and looked for the entrance and I went onto the site. And I'm glad I really did because I was able to see how the first phase was being built. And I was astonished to see so much space in between the buildings that that would allow residents and automobiles to be able to get around without being crowded. That was good. And then it allowed me to go across over to the to the to the shack, I don't, I mean, I can't remember the other name, but I talked to the supervisor and he was able to inform me what were they going to do with phase two. And then I went back home and I read the report again. And I was able to combine both phase one and phase two together. Because phase two residents are able to go over to phase one and enjoy the pool, the rec room. Everything that phase one belongs to phase two. And that was good. And I like that because they want one of each. But I want to talk about federal housing. That's important to me. See, I look for the small details. And federal housing to me is very, very important. Because my mother and father came from Puerto Rico to New York City to live. And they live in a tenement building where there were roaches and rats and garbage cans and metal containers in front of the building. Only New Yorkers know what that's like, when you can smell the stench daily. But when they got an opportunity to move into the Washington projects, we moved up. We were able to live a better life, to have hot water, good structure in the apartment. We lived across the street from the public school, I mean, right the backyard. We have fourteen stories, eight apartments on each floor. We were happy, we moved up. You know how many people wait to move in a nice building, federal building? Because they are rules they have to abide by so they can live comfortable. That's why I wanted to know if it was a federal funded building, because there are laws that the developer has to abide by. I hope when this is all done and the streets are finally done and the bicycle lane is done, everything's done, that we'll hear another report in the future like the one we heard today. That the same gentleman, the same resident that complained in twenty nineteen, came back in twenty twenty one and realized that promises can be kept. And they were. So I hope that tonight, that we give those that live with low income, have an opportunity to live in a beautiful place. Because when you go look at that place, good Lord, I lived in the project, did I have a swimming pool on the fourteen floor? Heck, no. I had to go all the way to OSHA Beach, all the way down on the other end of New York City. See, people are going to have a carpool lane, I mean, carpool, swimming pool, this being laundromat, everything, everything, I mean, good Lord. Wonderful to know that the federal government is funding all that for someone's, someone's life can live better for a little longer. I hope it doesn't get approved because I know I'm going to say yes to it for sure because I understand federal housing projects.
Thank you. I think I'll go next. I particularly think that phase one is coming along very beautifully. And I'm very impressed with the fact that the developer has been working within the community and the neighbors and really trying to make it a good project for that neighborhood. I find that very refreshing because not a lot of developers think that way. So and I like the fact you're mitigating some of the the safety issues. So I am going to vote for the project. Mr. Sims?
I I too like the project, but I'm going to, I do have some things to say. So one is on issues that, and this is more just a a statement that that this project is a good project, it's going to create affordable housing. The city is required to do that to meet its housing element requirements. And and as a planning commission, we need to support projects to do that. So I I I get that. But I do, this is a, I do want people to understand the, you know, no good deed ever goes unpunished. So the city, the city is required by through the state is required, gives these density bonuses and whatnot to create more affordable housing. So you get these reductions of parking, you get reduction in impact fees. And the, I've already talked at length about, you know, reduction in parking potentially puts cars where they probably otherwise should be, they should be in a parking spot next to the apartment. But suffice to say, when there's a, when there's a reduction in impact fees, the city, the city is not collecting the appropriate amount of impact fees on a per per unit basis to cover the pro, the the actual impact that the that the project or the the project is having. So what do I mean by that? If the, if they're supposed to collect, I'll use parks as an example. Each project should pay a certain park fee. I don't have any idea what that fee is. But if there's a reduction in the fee and the apartment is filled up with kids and family that goes and use a park that they didn't pay enough for, then eventually, if enough of these happen, the parks that are built will become saturated and overused and there won't be enough room for everybody because there's not enough impact fees being collected. The way to get around that is the city raises the impact fees for everybody else. And so it's kind of a zero sum game. No good deed goes, somebody's getting, this developer, he's doing a good job. He, you know, don't hate to get, don't hate the players, it's the game. The, he's just playing within the rules set by Sacramento and the federal government. But I just, just, we should all realize that as a city, when these projects go, it doesn't come for free, somebody actually has to pay for it. And it's either going to be paid with degradation in our use because there's additional traffic, the traffic fees aren't being paid, park fees that aren't being paid, traffic or parking spaces that aren't being included. It's it's a degradation in the general overall quality of the city. It will benefit, though, the people that do get to live there. I don't, I agree totally with Raphael about that. So I don't know if the if the lake is going up or down, but there is, I just, that it is a concerted mind on that. What I do like, and the other thing, in response to the the comments by Ramos, was it, is about the cumulative impacts of traffic. I I sit on the sixty freeway, I have to drive to Rubito every morning. At five o'clock in the morning till probably ten o'clock in the morning, it is a cluster between the sixty two fifteen to the ninety one two fifteen. It is horrible, that probably takes twenty five to twenty, twenty minutes to get five miles. It's only going to get worse, the cumulative traffic in this city is not being handled. And so I, we got to add affordable housing and we got all these projects just piling up. I I don't know how people are going to get to work, get out of Moreno Valley at some point. So I, that's just a. So I, that's just a, that's not this potential thirty-two unit project's problem. What I do like about it is, this is, I think, the first time in ten years or eight, nine years I've been on the planning commission that I've heard an opposition neighbor come in later and say, I like the project. So hats off to the developer to really working with your neighbors on that. I also want to say that I, I think the project, this is one of the, this is a very, very good example that I wish other, uh, recently, uh, recent projects where there's existing neighborhoods, they would use this as an example of how a project should be, a new project adjacent to or close by existing should be designed where there's, there, there is, uh, compatibility and some transition so that it's a smooth and, uh, keeps the neighborhood level livable and quality of life maintained. So anyhow, that's my two cents on it.
Commissioner Koby?
You know, like I said, I've been on the project. I know what it takes as, as a developer. I, I know that it's, it, these projects are not really as easy as people think. A lot of paperwork involved, uh, for these developers to get paid. Dealing with the federal government. There is, you know, certified payroll, it's prevailing wage. They're a little more complicated to build. So I do, I do, uh, appreciate the developer coming in. I too, Alvin, like coming in, in that, that, that's an older area. Developing it there, I liked the spacing on it. I was, I was a little bit surprised because I do, you know, my job requires me to look into some of these type of projects. And I've, I've seen a lot of, uh, multi-use, uh, these, uh, multi-tenant housing like this. And, uh, I was really impressed on the, the development of this and the design. How spread out it was, it's only two stories as opposed to three stories and literally stacked on top of each other. This one has a lot of space. And, um, you know, there's going to be times where, as a city, we have to, you know, help out. And if that means, um, you know, waiving some fees, personally, I feel I'm good with that. To, to help families in need and to all come up together, I'm all for it. You know, I'm, I'm very, uh, pro-growth, but I'm also very pro, um, you know, helping those in need because, um, because you never know when you might be that, in that, in that, in that situation. So as far as, um, I do, I do agree. I think that there's, there is a problem with lack of parks in Moreno Valley. That's another issue that I do have. I do want to see more parks being grown. I, I'm a, I'm very involved in baseball with my son. And there hasn't been a baseball field built in, uh, about eighteen years. I think the last one was the Shadow Mountain. So I'm really going to push for new developers to start putting in on that. And I'm gonna really harp on the city to, let's get some more baseball fields in the city, some more parks. I do want to see that, but this project, I like the project. Thirty-two units, I have no problem with that. Even if I was on the planning commission in 2019, I would have voted for this without blinking at it. I, I like what was done. So that's my comment.
Anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion.
Well, let's go.
I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission, take the following actions, adopt, uh, adopt resolution twenty, twenty-one dash forty-eight. Approve the initial study mitigating NAGDEC. I need to read all of this, uh, recommendation number two.
At, at a minimum, you need to read each of the resolution numbers.
Okay, oh yeah, all right, okay, good, all right. And then B, I would, uh, adopt resolution number twenty, twenty-one dash forty-nine. And also adopt resolution number twenty, twenty-one dash five fifty. And then lastly, adopt, uh, resolution number twenty, twenty-one dash fifty-one.
May we have a second, please?
I second that.
Commissioner Koby, on a second. Let's call for the vote. And the motion is approved unanimously. Okay, may we have a staff wrap up, please?
The recommendations of the planning commission on this item will be carried forward to the city council for their consideration and final action. The expected city council hearing date for this item is January fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the last item of the evening, item number four. The proposed omnibus municipal code amendment includes various updates and text cleanups for the purpose of clarifying and streamlining various development standards with entitlement one, planning and zoning, chapter nine point zero two, permits and approvals, chapter nine point zero three, residential districts, chapter nine point zero five, industrial districts, chapter nine point zero seven, special districts, chapter nine point zero eight, general development standards, chapter nine oh nine, specific use development standards, chapter nine point eleven, parking, pedestrian and loading requirements, chapter nine point one four, land divisions, chapter nine point five, definitions, chapter nine point six, design guidelines, and chapter nine point one seven, landscape and water efficiency requirements, and additional comprehensive updates to section nine point zero three point zero five, density bonus program for affordable housing, and section nine point zero nine point one three zero, accessory dwelling units consistent with the state law and to further housing production. One sentence. Can we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, thank you Chair Korzak for making our presentation for us this evening.
I only read what was on here.
Just kidding. So your pleasure, Chris Harbsy will be giving the presentation now.
Chair Korzak and members of the planning commission. Oh, you did cover quite a bit of the report with your, your reading. So, uh, the omnibus code amendment, uh, proposes revisions to various sections of Title Nine of the, the municipal code. Title Nine includes all of the city's planning and zoning requirements. The municipal code amendments generally fall into three categories. We have those amendments that, that are necessary to comply with state law. And, and you'll see that about half of the amendments that, for you tonight are in that category. Amendments to streamline and clarify existing code requirements and other minor clarifications and cleanup items which are primarily just addressed in the report. There are just a couple of those. So we're going to first talk about the amendments to comply with state law. So first of all, there's a comprehensive update of standards for accessory dwelling units. This update addresses state law and provides updates or updated information that is easy for residents to use. Towards this end, the section includes two tables that include all of the requirements for detached and attached accessory dwelling units. The next category of a comprehensive update of the language of a particular section is the density bonus requirement section. Uh, but it is important to underscore that this section is limited to implementing recent changes to state law. So there are no other changes proposed by staff or just adopting or proposing what is in state law. The, the next amendment is a rather minor one to, uh, clean up our, our code language to match the state law with regard to public noticing requirements for blind, aged, and disabled communities. Also, there's another minor amendment to the lapse of approvals and extensions of time. The language is revised to match the subdivision map act, which allows map extensions for six years. The current code identifies five years. Uh, this is followed by the next amendment to minimum lot size and dwelling unit size for multifamily projects. And these amendments address the state of California Housing and Community Development's comments on the city's housing element. And then finally, in this category, we're also, are modifying the code to allow for residential and mixed-use parcel maps to be approved administratively. And this is to comply with SB nine, which requires ministerial review for residential and mixed-use parcel maps. With that, we'll move on to the next category. So the first one of those is, uh, a new code provision with regard to increasing energy efficiency for lead buildings by requiring industrial buildings larger than fifty thousand square feet to be designed and constructed to meet the equivalent of lead silver. Uh, this change will promote more efficient green buildings and also help address policies in the city's climate action plan. Next amendment is to delete the requirement for RV parking for hotels just based on staff's experience that was not, it's not really necessary to have a standard for that. And then the next amendment is to specify that hotels over four stories would have some additional amenities. So this kind of ties in with the, the general plan update and, and promoting the, the downtown center and, and trying to upgrade our, our standards for getting, uh, I guess you could say more upscale hotels. Uh, we're also proposing an amendment, uh, to require a security plan for commercial centers larger than two acres and multifamily projects of more than fifty dwelling units. This will propose, or this will provide a better sense of security for residents and, uh, property owners. And then finally, uh, there's some clarifying language with regard to, making clear the responsibility of property owners with regard to freeway, um, right-of-way maintenance along their frontage and to clarify responsibility for those parkway areas that are along the frontage where sometimes it's not clear what is part of the right-of-way and, and who should maintain it. And then, as I mentioned, there were a couple of minor modifications. I'm not going to really specifically mention those. We added one definition, uh, but those are mentioned in the staff report. And with that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve resolution number two thousand twenty-one dash fifty-four and thereby recommend that the city council approve the municipal code amendments, pen twenty-one dash zero zero seven three, based on the findings set forth and are referenced in this resolution and adopt an ordinance to include the amendments included in this resolution. And with that, I'll open it up for, for questions of staff.
Questions?
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, I, I, the one that kind of, I, I mean, I could go on and on and on about, because in my, I, I'm general manager of a community services district, so I have to deal with, uh, people wanting to build ADUs, there's junior ADUs, and there's a house in the house, and there's a house in back. And it's a, how much, you know, it's just a, uh, I don't know if, I haven't got my mind totally wrapped around that. And I don't know if I totally agree with the concept, but that's neither here nor there. So it is good, I, I guess I, I do agree that the, it is very complicated. So it's good that the title, Title Nine does give some specificity for whatever the rules are, whether we like them or not. So, but I don't, I don't understand, help me understand the maintenance of parkways by property owners. I thought, I thought when we dedicate, when a, a track goes, goes in, we dedicate for public use, roads and rightways, which includes landscaped areas. And if I was to take this literally, how I, how I interpreted the, the, staff report is, if you've built along, for instance, the, uh, the Prologist, when they built along the Caltrans right-of-way, who was, are you, are we saying by city ordinance because they're building adjacent to the sixty freeway that they would be required to take care of the right-of-way or take care of the landscape area in the Caltrans right-of-way?
That is correct. We are, we are, we are moving the, the request, the direction that, uh, we, that we're putting forward with this item is for, um, an applicant who is adjacent to Caltrans right-of-way to enter into a maintenance agreement with Caltrans right-of-way, with Caltrans, if they are amenable to it. Uh, we are still.
Who, who is amenable?
The Caltrans is amenable. For them to provide maintenance services along those edges of the freeway. These are our gateways into our city. And we do need to have them maintained. There are, there have been past concerns related to the abilities of Caltrans to do the maintenance. Therefore, we are looking to our businesses to assist us in doing that. Additionally, along, um, the public streets, we are also identifying those areas where we may not have a community facilities district, where there is already, you know, public improvements established. Or we're looking to property owners who ultimately are coming in for some form of an entitlement to ultimately ensure that they are maintaining those parkways along their project frontages. Much like you do as a single-family homeowner, you maintain a small strip of, you know, lawn that is traditionally in public right-of-way, but it's part of your, you know, uniform lawn. So you're maintaining that area. We're looking to have businesses that, do, you know, maintain the same responsibility along their project, along their business frontage as well as adjacent to city right-of-ways.
You were singing my song, uh, the, uh, Camp sixty may have, Camp two fifteen may have, uh, new sheriffs in town. But I, I guess, you know, you know, I was on my tirade about, you know, does the, uh, we're, we're handing out lollipops to, to, uh, reduce this, reduce that, to make it so affordable housing. Here, now we're saying, okay, now you're gonna, I like this, I like the idea of, because I do think that, that potentially, when you get out of the way of private, private sector, they don't want to have, uh, they'll do what they need to do. But it's a, so just, so let's say I own In-N-Out right at the intersection there of the off-ramp. What is that? Is that Pigeon Pass or, Pigeon Pass? Or I'm the Home Depot guy. Or, so you know, and they got, you know, it's a KOA right there at that intersection all the time. Or, or I owned a Vista Paint and they, I got, there's a guy that has a frigging multi-unit, uh, hut right there on, on the on-ramp. So what, how do you, I just, what's the equity? How do you, if you have a high, uh, a piece of property, if you're a business owner with a piece of property that's right on someplace that's high traffic, high volume, high occupancy from people that we don't want there, creating a mess and trash and whatever. It just seems like that's, that's a, a big burden to put on private. I, I just, I, some of the, you know, we're a social, a city is made to incorporate for the social good of the entire community. I don't know, I, that, that's a little one I, I, I just, uh, I mean, I, I, I'm kind of for it, but I'm also kind of like, I don't, the implimability of that, if that's even a word, seems challenging at best. But anyhow.
And, and I would, I, I wish we had our city attorney here who could help us walk through that state, those steps tonight. Unfortunately, we do not, but it has, we have vetted it with our city attorney as well.
Yeah, oh, 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 I'm sure you can set up encroachment permits and if you can get, I, I get the, I get the physical, the mechanisms to it. I just don't know the equity of it. The, the, some people will be disproportionately harmed as a business owner. I think, if they, in a, in an area where there is, are homeless, what are they called, they're really, unsheltered or whatever, whatever the proper term is, that, uh, choose to live in certain areas that are close to certain, uh, amenities that they need to have on a daily basis. So any, they, so my other question on this would be is, is, so, so this is on a go-forward basis. How does the city, how's the city going to deal with the one, with the, that are pre-existing? Absent, absent, somebody comes in for, comes in for, uh, an entitlement?
At, at this time, we do not, at this time, we don't have a retroactive, um, format for this. It is something that has been discussed at a, at a staff level. But we do not have anything at this time that may be a future amendment before this, um, commission.
Does, does, has, has this, have you done a, uh, I mean, I, I'm in a public agency, you know, plagiarism is the best, uh, best form of flattery if somebody's doing it right. It is, have you, has any other cities already implemented this kind of a, of policy?
We're trailblazing on this one.
We're not the back of the handle, we're at the tip of the sword. All right, well, I'm, I'm good, I, I'd like to see how that works. All right.
Did I? Did I hear correctly? It, it sounded like, uh, Caltrans has the yay or nay on it?
Yes, ultimately, there will need to be an. Yes, ultimately, there will need to be an agreement between Caltrans and the development, the property owner with relation to that. Again, it's something that we have vetted with the city attorney. They believe that there is agreements available out there for that to occur and that there are opportunities for us to seek that. So we will be continuing to pursue that with the local district.
And with that being said, is that a a negotiable between Caltrans and the property owner say, we'll do it Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays, you know, you take care of January through December?
That will be that will be established in the agreement as how often it re, how often it occurs and the type of individuals that'll be permitted to go out and do that that type of work.
I guess with that being said, if if Caltrans can say yay or no, or they can say, yes, we can do it with this type of negotiation going on between the business owner and Caltrans. How does that come back to the city for us to say, well, hey, that part fell on Caltrans or this part fell in the business? Good question.
It's a good. It's a good question, and it's ultimately something that we will have to monitor through the agreements that are established. I really the agreement between the prop, between the property owner and Caltrans. That'll be monitored by the city as well. We'll be we'll be involved in that agreement process. I don't know if we will be named as a party to it or not at this stage, but it is something that we will be reviewing and monitoring. That way, we can ensure that, you know, the goals of this amendment to the municipal code are implemented.
Does the 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 measure G? What does the city expect? What does that actually go into? I I I assume that passed, right?
Twenty twenty-three.
Measure G would be twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three. Is that fiscal or calendar January? Is it? Well, it doesn't matter.
Manny's ident, we're identif, we believe it's calendar.
Yeah, so I don't know. It it just I I I like novel ideas. It's this is, this is pretty clever. So good. I I I think I support it, but I it's a very novel idea, but I I I see that there could be some things fraught with implementability, you know, getting implemented. I think that's going to be somewhat, it's going to take a while to get that shagged out, but the I'm used to seeing, you know, lighting and landscape maintenance districts form, you know, that you ask, and is there? Is there other ways that to? For instance, you know, like when World Logistics goes through, would they would that because they would still have to come in for permits and, you know, individual projects that would be along the sixty freeway per se, would they have to? They would fall up even though they have the specific plan?
In terms of World Logistics Center, the only portion of World Logistics Center that's actually adjacent to the sixty is east of Theodore or World Logistics Center Parkway over to Gilman Springs.
But I but I'm just using, I'm not trying to, I'm just saying as an example, could they? So kind of the concept would be with with this is with this this policy now. Developer would have to go and it would coordinate with the city, develop some kind of an encroachment permit and go to Caltrans and it just like if you were going to do a bore under the freeway or you're you're going to do something.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Well, man, I yeah, good luck to you on that. And I guess the other thing is is from, you know, from there's a lot of already sixty and two fifteen along the on the front edge that's already developed. I would hope that some of the money, because when I read the pamphlet, you know, a little bit of the blurbs about measure C or measure G, excuse me, with the one percent increase. Hopefully, some of that money could go towards beautification and maintenance of our intersections where Camp sixty and Camp two fifteen go.
So one thing I would note is that the city of Marina Valley actually does not have any direct city limit that abuts Interstate two fifteen.
Oh.
That is either, that is either, that is either
Probably right.
That is either March, Joey Powers Authority or the City of Riverside.
Well, we'll write a letter to them too. So, you know, that's a but it's hopefully, I mean, if some of the money, I mean, the in concept until until there's a way, if you guys can hook in existing people along the two fifteen or the sixty, excuse me, to maintain, you know, the intersections and off ramps and whatnot. I think it would be from a public policy standpoint, if some of the money, you know, is diverted in in the city in of itself, goes and gets an encroachment permit and hires an appropriate landscape company or trash maintenance to do the maintenance along there, right? That seems like a well-spent of some of our tax dollars, but yeah, that's just.
Okay, um, do we have any more questions?
I do, ma'am. Thank you. I want to thank the staff for the report because it helped me to understand case number three. That's why I was talking about federal funding because a lot of this of this here helps me to understand how he's going to spend tax dollars to help the low-income residents. And I see the updates on the lot size, unit size, page twenty-five, section nine point zero three point zero five zero density bonus program for affordable housing. I read all that, and I understand that you give and take. Like my fellow commissioner mentioned, I'd rather give a little more to be able to help someone live a better life. Okay, we lose one or two parking. Maybe they don't have cars. I don't know. I don't know what the future will bring because that's just the way things are. But when I read this, I think about my seniors, those that are disabled can do a lot of things. So I'm grateful to able to have this in front of me to be able to understand our future development that's coming in. No one needs to live in a four by four. You know, they should have a little bit more space and be able to move around on the property, you know, and things like that. So I'm 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 jazzed about the about the plan, the update because it helps. The only thing that I'm I see that's missing here is why can't we? I don't know if there's an ordinance or not, where business owners that own plazas let them get trashy. And then on some of the boulevards, like Sonneby Boulevard and other boulevards, you see the landscape in front of the businesses that are trashed. And I know that's supposed, I I believe that should be private property, and they allow some of the transience to make homes on some of these properties that makes it look a little uglier. That's not even counting some of the freeways that we have here that they're going back to putting up the tents and dumping all their garbage again. And I hope whatever future developer comes and decides to build along the freeway, they they would gladly be able to help our city with our with that project of cleaning it up. Now, Mr. Sims mentioned dollars, how we can get tax dollars into a program. I think we can use some of that money in the city Marina Valley to get a youth program job going, get some youth people, high schoolers to go out there and get paid and help to clean. You know, I think we used to do that once. I believe we did in the old days, and I know budget changes things. But since the city is doing well, you know, and and we want to do better, maybe we can take a little bit of that money and start a youth program that we can get high schoolers to go out there with staff or contractors and clean up the city a little bit more. Weekend job, you know, something, something that they can have money and pay for their own phones, things like that, you know, just like I do with my granddaughter. Excuse me, with my granddaughter, you know, she works part-time, but she pays for her phone and her car insurance, you know, and the rest we do. So, you know, things like that. I like that we can get our youth involved, really, to learn how to make money and spend their wisely and always remember that they don't need to steal, lie and cheat. They can make a living like we all do here, like we all do here. Make a living, teach them how to make a living. They don't do that in high school any longer. We need to do that as a city. Thank you.
It's interesting you say that back in seventy-nine and the early eighties, we did have a program like that. I actually involved with that, and we would jump on the to go clean it where Riverside where the raceway was, we used to do that and make a lot of money as a high schooler to go do that. I think it's a great idea, Rafael.
Chairperson and commissioners, I can answer some of your questions. You're correct. A lot of our shopping centers are lacking a lot of maintenance, and that is a responsibility of the owners of these shopping centers to do that. And I know lately they haven't been doing their job and maintaining their properties. So just so you know, code enforcement is talking to a lot of these shopping center owners, and we are giving them notices that they need to start cleaning their properties, landscaping them, and just just maintain the everyday maintenance of the properties, trash and debris and everything like that. I know we do have a lot of illegal dumping behind the shopping centers, and we're targeting a lot of the owners. And I know it's it's not them doing it, but they need to understand that they have to figure out how to stop people from doing that by either fencing it off or doing something or having maintenance or I mean, excuse me, or security. And that's one of the reasons why we're doing these some of these amendments. One of them in here is for any new shopping center comes in that's a certain size, you have to have security. And it's security's job to to deal with homeless people that are hanging out there. Okay, you can't loiter. You can't do this. And we don't have that in a lot of our shopping centers. So again, a lot of these changes are to address some of those issues that we don't have anything in the book that we can use. So now we're really, like I said, we're going after and 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 looking at all the shopping centers along our major corridors. And all the new ones are going to be coming in with these new conditions of approval. So now you're going to have to at all times have a security guard. At all times, you're going to have to maintain the properties. And again, those weren't in the condition of approval on a lot of the older ones. So again, a lot of these changes are to help code enforcement, planning and building have or require them to maintain their properties. Because again, they are making money on the city, but they're not putting it back into the properties. So again, I mean, there's all kinds of properties that need to be painted. Sidewalks need to be pressure washed. So again, the these are all the changes that you're seeing here. This is going to help us take care of those issues.
I Benny, that that is is exactly right. If you tolerate, if it's it's one of those, it's you you let the you let the camel get his nose under the tent. Next thing you know, you got the camel pooping in your tent because that's just the way they roll. And and if you don't take care, take care of the little things, it it just snowballs in the back. But the reverse of that, though, if you pay attention to the detail and and I it takes a lot of work. You probably, maybe your one percent sales tax is going to buy a squad of code enforcements, but but anyhow, I I I do believe you pay attention to the detail and you stay diligent upon, you know, diligent and and hold old people to the to what they're supposed to do. The the whole city will get better. They it that in of itself, something like that is does have an opportunity to keep the rise our our lake, Lake Marina Valley, you know, all of our boats rise when everybody does what they're supposed to do.
And again, the the maintenance new section that we're trying to put in, we understand it's going to be difficult to 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 deal with. But we had to figure out something. We had to try something because we have these problems, and if we don't figure something out now, it may not work, and we'll come back and we'll adjust it. But we got to do something. And again, we've asked some of the new developers or applicants that are coming, going to be coming to the commission. We've asked them about this condition, you know, we're going to put a condition in that you have to maintain the right of way area. And it really, it's more for like trash and debris, stuff like that. Homeless, it's another issue. Then we get involved with them and we work with them on that. But and they've agreed to do this. They've agreed to this condition. So again, you'll be seeing this condition as a condition as part of the CP or the plot plan, but we wanted to put it in the books. That's why it's a lot stronger. So when they they do try to take us a court, it's in the code book already. So yeah, you got to try. And and again, if it works and and we we can get it to work, then believe me, you'll see other cities looking at us and and try to take the same information from us.
It's kind of like, you know, the the was the project, the district along where the the old home base is, and they're doing the floor decor and all that, you know, they're I mean, those guys are spending a boatload of money, but you know, every day you drive by, they finally tore down the car wash, but that was a little, that was a place to hang out, you know, but those guys, from a marketing standpoint and the invitability and, you know, welcoming this, the people come shop and do things there. You don't want trash and debris and
Exactly. It's all about appearance. So
I I can see where, you know, if you can get those guys to step it up, it benefits their own business.
That's correct.
Last quick question and comment on the process of how to actually amend some of these municipal codes. Is there a public involvement, think tank involvement, that sort of thing? I think it'd be a good idea to have the public involvement, business owner involvement, planning commissioner involvement, city council involvement. Because there are probably some folks out there that have some pretty good ideas.
Yes. And again, a lot of these these amendments, we tried to do them at the end of the year. We talked to staff and see some of the issues that we have that we need to address to help development come in the city and to regulate development in the city. So again, like I said, and meet the state requirements for the city as well. So so we try to do it. I think we did it last year at the same time. So so be prepared every December, we're going to come in to the planning commission with new requirements or things that we feel that should be changed.
And and to and I want to make one other point. This is an open public meeting. This is one of those opportunities.
That's correct.
Yes, exactly. And we haven't gotten to the public comments yet, so.
Well, I I just what I just want to say, these amendments are pretty, these are, these are fairly, these are very substantive, the the ADU thing and the that that is a very substantive that that will be pervasive amongst everything that your whole planning department will do. I that's a a big deal in my in my operation, our thing, yeah, so.
Okay, some of these comments probably belong in deliberations, not questions. I'm just trying to move us along here. Okay. Now we're going to open public testimony. We'll have the ability to do more questions after this, but I would really like to move us along and open public testimony. The clerk will call upon each person who was requested to speak. Each member of the public wishing to speak will have a maximum of three minutes to speak on this agenda item. Do we have any public comments?
No, Madam Chair.
There we go. All right. Okay, at this time, would we like to ask any additional questions? I'm just going to open this up for questions and then we'll close it. All right, we can close it first.
One question I want to ask Manny. Manny, it is, I know we're talking about this is including gas stations, right?
That is correct. Any any businesses along our major corridors that we're looking at. Again, it's all about appearance, and we need to improve the appearance of our major corridors.
Thank you.
And can I make one clarification? This regard to the security or the landscaping?
The landscaping, because they also are in front and up and down the boulevard. And a lot of it, we know when we drive into a gas station, that we see others that don't take care of it like others.
Yeah. So so yes, the landscaping definitely applies.
The security is another question.
Security, again, it's a two-acre site minimum. I do want to clarify that.
If there are no other questions, I will close the public the public meeting, and we'll move on to deliberations. Shall we begin to deliberate? Shall we begin to deliberate? Who would like to speak?
I'm exhausted. I'm sorry.
Sometimes you get a little mixed up between, um, questions and deliberations and we, we have to be cognizant of the fact they are two different things. I'm trying. I let you go tonight. I let you go a little bit. Go ahead. All right, any deliberations? I, I think you did a bang up jog. I think everything on here is, uh, uh, very, very good. And I really want to compliment you for taking the initiative to move forward, whether they work or not. Again, it's something that you'll massage over time and figure out, but I want to thank the staff. I think you did a good job and I'm certainly going to vote for this.
I do, um, I really like some of this. I, I think it's, you know, um, I commend Manny and, and your staff. You know, if you don't try it, how do you know? And I know there's a lot of the cities that would just sit on their hands and not do anything. I, I really am, I'm, I'm excited to see what's to come and hey, these businesses are making money off our city. I think you made it very clear. These, these, these owners of these shopping centers and they're sitting on their hands. And it's about time that they, they take care of our city. I mean, they're not, more, more than likely those owners of those shopping centers don't live in our town, but they're making money off our town. It's time. I'm glad to see this. I'll be voting on this.
I want to thank the staff for the report. But for me personally speaking, it's section nine point zero three point five zero. The density bonus program for affordable housing. Very important. How you made it possible for all different stages, whether it's a college student, whether it's a senior person, whether someone's disabled or someone that's blind has an opportunity to have housing. I like what you did with that, that law, that section. It makes Moreno Valley what it is. That big M, that M to me is, is a miracle. That M to me. That we're doing good things here for all of us in the city of Moreno Valley, whether you make a million dollars or where you only make ten dollars. We're going to treat you the same, a human being, and you deserve that.
Anyone else?
And I, my last comment again, I'd like to see a, a little more open process on inviting, uh, community members to be, um, invited in the process. Where they can assist. So we invite our community and to say, I live here too. So, um, my voice in order to, uh, be able to make change in our cities.
Well, if there are no more comments, I will, um, ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I, I make a motion that the planning committee take the following action to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-four, along with approving the, uh, municipal code amendments, PEN twenty-one zero zero seven three.
Okay, may we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bergara seconds. I'll call for the vote. Okay, it is approved unanimously. Um, is there a staff wrap up?
Thank you, Chair. The recommendation of the planning commission on this item will be carried forward to the city council for their consideration and final action. The expected city council hearing date for this item is January fourth. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is other commission business and at this time we have no items. The next item is staff comments. Do we have any staff comments at this time?
I do. I want to wish the staff.
You're not a staff. You have to wait for.
I should be.
There you go. Do you have a job opening? Okay.
Just, um, staff definitely wants to wish the commission happy holidays and we will, um, see everyone in January.
Great. Okay, the next item is planning commissioner comments. Do we have any planning commissioner comments?
Yes. See, you allow Sean to beat me. I wanted to say it myself, but I want to wish everybody, the whole staff Merry Christmas and a happy, happy new year. To all the residents in Moreno Valley, may you have a blessed holiday. Because there are many in December. May you enjoy each and one of them in love and peace. Because here in the city of Moreno Valley, we're trying to do that for everybody. I wish my fellow commissioners Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Really, I'm very grateful to live in a city, in a country that we can make decisions for the greater good of humankind. It's a blessing. Thank you.
Okay, who wants to top that? Well, anyways, I, I do want to wish, um, the staff a happy holidays. Um, it's been a good year. I think we've had some controversial actions and things that we've done, but we've worked as a team and we've worked for the betterment of the city. So I want to, um, commit again, once again, to a good year ahead where we'll look at each thing on the agenda independently and without any kind of, um, forethought of, you know, bias. So anyways, have a good holiday. And at this time, is there anyone else that wants to speak? Okay, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at, um, eight fifty-four to our next regular meeting of January thirteenth. So we'll see you in about a month. Good night.